I guess we're gonna call this meeting ordered. Roll call.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Here.
Martin?
You're here.
McDermott?
Here. Okay. Leave the open meeting complies.
I, the other side clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the County Clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice that the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting. Witness my hand this first day of February 2016.
Consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine procedure normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. Addition of items of new business to the agenda?
I do have one that will add, please.
Do you add it at the end, or do you add it now?
At the end.
Minutes of the January 4th, 2016, regular board meeting. Have that before us.
Hello. All right. He's always wearing it.
Good.
It's in the mail, Jane.
We'll make him sit over here.
I'm moving back there. I'm taking his goodies.
I did not see any errors or anything with the minutes of the overall meeting.
Okay. The approval of the treasurer's report on the status of funds and investments.
Okay, you should have that in your email also. And again, I will tell you that right now, we're really good standings at this point in time. If you can see, we've got a total of $8,191 money's available to us. And you also have an encumbered comparison. Out of the general fund, we have encumbered $731,000 more than what we did a year ago. And in also warrant comparison, $519,000. I will tell you at this point in time that with all bills paid, expected to be paid, we have 57% of our total budget left for the remaining of the year. And our gross production was $134,000 this year, which is down. Our total gross production for the year is about $1,005,000, less than what we had last year, but right on schedule from 2014. Last year was such a tremendous gross production. So we're sitting in here in pretty good shape. We did get a letter today that we carried over too much money last year and that we need to watch it, and if we do carry over again, then we could get a penalty the next I still think from what I've learned in the two and a half years I've been here that we can go down to the state board and appeal that, and I think with conditions, they have not given that penalty out anymore, and I've witnessed that on three different school districts going down to do that. So honestly, we're in really good shape. And again, we're in good shape because our total evaluation's gone up. Okay, so we've gone from $85 million to $130 million, and that's where our money's coming in at this point in time. So looking at projected income, even next year, we should be in pretty good shape. If everything holds out and we don't get any more cuts from state aid and things of that nature.
Okay. I have this here. Approval of the activity funds on the boards. I guess there's two of them.
The year-to-date, you know, everything looks good. We've got money in our activity accounts. You know, we've got a total of $358,000 in all the activity accounts. We'll go on later tonight, and you'll see what kind of monies we generated, concessions to hand, inter-account transfers in that area, and so forth. So fundraisers, and the activity accounts were solid. Any questions on any of those?
There looked like a huge amount spent in baseball.
Well, part of that baseball is an open account for about a $2,700 for motel rooms for tournaments later on in the spring. So purchase order 966 Holly and Express, that's about $2,100 for that.
They went from like $59 to $11.
Right. And we've done a lot of work on the baseball field itself for those new nets, replacement at the baseball field itself, paying for some of those bills. And again, that money was generated from Sheriff Trust. Okay? I deserve it.
Can I?
Sure.
Is this where you want to ask about Longfellow School?
No, not yet.
Okay.
That will be our strategic planning, Coach.
Okay. That's fine.
Does that say, what are we?
Fundraisers.
Fundraisers. Are there any questions on the fundraisers? Okay. Okay, this is our football concession. Those groups that top list is from the Alba High School football games, and that bottom group is for Northwestern's, Cherokee, and a couple of playoffs that we had to get. So that's the disbursement there for those. And then Lex U did what, a $2,500 straight across payment to the concession at Northwestern rather than a sharing profit to issue a contract, which helps out quite a bit.
So these are like the groups that worked?
Groups that worked, and that's their money that they're receiving into their activity accounts.
Electric Gold did a nice job, didn't they?
Well, I think Electric Gold did all of Northwestern. Did they not care?
I think so. They did quite a few of them.
And then they may have done one playoff game, and then the other Cherokee games that were there. Pretty good here for us. And it sure helps to have such a nice concession stand, too.
Moving on to 3G approval of function changes.
And again, this is the same amount of money that's in our budget. We're just moving from one function to another, just to balance. Majority are insurance changes. And because the added cost in the insurance came around January 1st, so Terry has taken the appropriate money out of these accounts and put it back into the, to the appropriate accounts to make sure that we balance at the end of the year. No new monies, no extra monies. It's just changing within the budget itself. And basically, this is about the time of year that we have to do this because we work for about three months on a guest estimate type of thing, and then we get the real budget and it's all in there, and then we get added expenses in different functions and so forth. So this is not anything new. Any questions there?
And 3H, approval of the child nutrition report.
Really doing pretty good in child nutrition. Our expenses totaled for the year about $106,000, incomes about $107,000, $170,000, excuse me. So we're in the black at this point in time, $64,000. And to a certain degree, we are there because we've moved everything out of child nutrition into the general account for salaries and those types of things. I know that we are starting a breakfast program at the high school, and they've had about 20 kids on the average eating at the high school, and they're averaging almost 60 eating at the high school cafeteria at lunch now. And in part of the expenditures in child nutrition, Ms. Mop, Verlaine is trying to help our cafeteria a little bit. We're going to buy pizza from Pizza Hut and serve it on Wednesdays, I think, someday. So that will be incorporated in next month. We're also in with that being able to pay online. Still have a little bugs to work out on that, but a parent can go online and pay for those lunches through our pay bank as a direct deposit type of thing. So that's gonna work out in the future for us, but we're still looking at a little bit of a few bugs in that yet.
We added a function.
Okay.
I don't think I wrote one. 3I, I don't know what it is, but we added one.
What was that new business?
Oh, okay.
I don't know. But did you add new business?
Yes, added it to new business.
New business.
Yeah, we have one out of new business. When we get down there, I will tell you what it is.
Okay.
Good job.
Can we vote?
We do need a motion for a consent agenda.
I move we approve consent agenda 3D through 3H.
3A?
Oh, yeah. Yep, 3A through 3H.
3A, excuse me, 3A. I had said the only ones I had.
I understand.
3A through 3H. I'm sorry. Hello. Second.
Martin?
Hi, miss.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ellis?
Aye. Meaning that I was 10 minutes late when they passed.
You're so generous.
I know. Item four, vote to approve or not to approve the purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for FY 2016. A, general fund number 11. B, co-op fund number 12. C, building fund number 21. And child nutrition funding, 2 and 30.
Well, as you can see, our encumbrance is down to about $34,000 for this month. Some of the biggest items that we had, purchase order 627, that was an open PO to repair the bus at Ada that had to be hauled off and put a new starter in. Purchase order 633, we replaced four backboards at the old high school gym with some glass ones. They were, they were the original backboards into the new gym when they ordered it, and they ordered board. So they were put in there, and they worn out, so we've got some to replace that and put some glass ones in there. 665, that's a renewal for reading services for the elementary schools, our software. 656, that was a new electrical box for the concession. I guess during Christmas, we had some shortages going out of concession, and Darryl got up to the top. The box was so tight, and the wind was causing a fire hazard because it rubbed short in one of the wires, so he had to put in a bigger box for that. And then he's got that fixed out, I think, at this point in time. Are there any other that you have questions on?
What's 660?
Oh.
Travel reimbursement.
For who?
Sierra Walker.
Sierra has a lot of travel for FFA. It may be blanket PO to make sure that we cover that, so it's just an open PO at this time. And my thing went down again.
That's not a bad price for one of those carboards.
Well.
That's just the insulation.
That's the labor.
Got it, okay.
You know, we had purchased those for, I can't even remember, and had them for a long time, but we couldn't ever get anybody to help us put them up and that. So that $1,600 were just the labor to put in. And I don't know if you've gone by Washington, but they're gonna be nice because I can already tell you that the just run down to the bus stops is a lot better because they go underneath those sheds, and they just wait, and they stay behind the line, and we don't have kids out there. We probably add some tent to the sides of those later on for some windbreaks, and maybe we'll get to use them tomorrow if it rains, and everybody gets underneath right on now. Any other questions on any of those? I will tell you that 664, we replaced the gym lights a month ago. Did not replace the ones underneath the stands. So we're trying to phase those in a little at a time to make sure that those are also LED lights. And the cost of the bulbs, when they go out, they're like $450, so we're gonna phase those in with new LED lights also. Any questions on co-op fund or building fund?
The sheet for E, is it, does anybody see it? Can I not see it?
What's that?
The sheet that we'd have for number E gifts.
There wasn't one.
Okay.
Because there weren't any encumbrances, but once she pays out of that, it has to stay on there, but it's the same, she's coming up the same amount every month.
So there's no amount? Okay, that shows zero. Okay, thank you.
It just shows as a.
Line item?
Yeah. Because once she pays it, then that goes into that total of expenditures for the year when she pays out of it.
On co-op, co-op fund, you have Northwest Physical Therapy at $5,000, $5,000, and Woodward Public Schools, $3,000. What is, what is that?
Woodward contracts with Northwest Physical Therapy to do their physical therapy for their school district through the co-op for those three-year-olds. And then that's just their contract for psychometry testing for students that they pay. And it's through the co-op, but it's at the Woodward sign.
Okay.
Correct?
I move that we approve the purchase order encumbrances as referenced in 4A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. Hang on just a second, I'm sorry. I'm still, I'm working. Now I am, I think. Item five, principal's report.
Mr. Parker, you go first.
Okay.
Let Mr. Eckhart go first because he has a city council meeting he has to attend. I wanted Mr. Eckhart to come and let you, kind of give you an insight to some of the technology that we use at the high school days, the computers that we have, that one that I initially with our Apple computers. He does an outstanding job in his classroom with kids to do that, and you'll see in his report that it's a quality, quality thing.
Thank you.
I was told to keep this brief, so I will do my best. I could, I could honestly talk all day about this if I had to, but I don't have the ability to do so. I'm kind of short, so.
Should I push forward?
Yeah. Well, actually, I kind of.
Those two can't read anyway.
Through my classroom, I've done a lot of different technology integration things. I actually had the first one-to-one classroom in Alba schools, was it four years ago? I think it was four years ago with iPads, and I was able to integrate those and try them out. They worked out really well, but that was just a one-classroom situation, so it kind of got to be where they would use it for my classroom, and they wouldn't, so it was harder to do that. Now we have the computers that everyone can use in all their classrooms. What I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna kind of go through some things that I do and kind of talk to you about some things that I, that I think are important. One of the most important aspects I see is the all-access-anywhere technology, where the students can have access to their information at all times. Even if they're not connected to the internet, they can go to, they can type a document, or they can make a presentation and upload it later. And I'll talk some more about those programs. My goal, honestly, is to supplement students with, supplement their education, not replace it. Enhance it through technology for them to see ways to improve them. I put on here, I'd rather be the first to do anything and fail and learn from it than be the 500th person to do the same thing over and over again. I don't, I don't believe in doing the same thing even year to year. I don't, I like to do new things. I like, and I'll talk about something I'm doing right now in a minute. I'm gonna tell you guys, though, challenges do exist, all right? I'm not gonna lie to you. This has been a challenge, and some of the students are uneasy with the transition. Some students are, you know, they'll forget their password, they'll forget to charge it, or something along those lines, but, but those are obstacles that we work to overcome and enhance for the students. The first thing I'm gonna talk to you guys about, and you'll see, I did, I did a screenshot because I didn't really have a, I didn't want to interrupt your thing here, and this is called Schoolage, and this is a website that I use. I can literally upload every single aspect of a student's curriculum onto this. That's documents, tests, discussions, quizzes. I give all my tests on this program. I type them in, and one of the neat things about it is it randomizes the test, even randomized questions, so the five of you or the six of you wouldn't even have the same test. So you couldn't go take a buddy, hey, question number four is B, because you wouldn't know if you told them that, you're probably gonna be wrong. And this is what's called an LMS. It's a learning management system. You can actually, through Schoolage, you could actually have all of your classes on there in the high school. You could have your science, your history, your English, your math on there, and on this little column on the side, it would tell you what assignments you have due what days. And you can put on discussion boards, all sorts of things. I've used this to, like I said, give information, give out tests, give, have discussions. I'll put a discussion on there, you know, either topical or a thematic discussion. And a big bonus is that it's free. Does not cost us anything. So now, there is, with technology, there's that time constraint. You do as the, when you're creating things technologically, it does take a little bit of time, but once you get it, you have it, so you can move on and do that. I put a quote on here that I really, really enjoy, and it says, "The most dangerous phrase in the language is we've always done it this way." I, I kind of try to live by that because I don't, I don't think we should always do things the way we've always done them. I think we should take what's worked and then enhance it and move forward. I'm not gonna read all these to you unless you really want me to, but these are just some different goals of informational technology. The one to me that, that really stands out is that the technology use, the way I'm using it, helps prepare students for future careers. There is no job that they are going to have in which they are not going to have to use a computer in some way, shape, or form. If it's, even if it's just for clocking in and clocking out of work, they're gonna have to use a computer in some way. If they get that digital literacy, as they call it, those skills, it's gonna help them. And it also helps with different learning styles and encourages collaboration among those things. This is a new program that we got this year that I am absolutely in love with. It's called MEMBIE. It's a vocabulary program, and it is self-paced and self-directed. The students have to get on their X amount of time per week. They see new words, they, every single pass skill, or as I looked at them, I did before we came, every single Oklahoma academic standard as well, the new standard that just came out last week, is covered by MEMBIE. Every single word page they see covers every single academic skill. It is a program that's available at sixth through 12th grade. And what it does is that actually, they start it in sixth grade, and it keeps their progress all the way through 12th grade. They could see as many as 10,000 new vocabulary words in six years.
The one thing that I will mention, since he mentioned this, is when Superintendent Hofmeister visited his classroom, she asked a student, what is the difference between this and just learning the vocabulary the old way? She said, "We retain it this way. The other way, we had to memorize."
What this does is it shows them a word, and immediately after they see the word page it asks them a question, and then three or four words down the line, it'll ask them a question about it again. And it will keep repeatedly asking them questions about that word until they have it mastered. It doesn't just show them once and they forget it. And then when it generates the test every Friday, it generates a test based upon the number of words they've seen. Now, if they didn't meet the word goal or didn't get to see enough words, they're gonna see some they hadn't seen before. So that's why they're encouraged to get on there and get their time. They see a unique test just for them, the words they've studied. They might, I have students on level one and students on level two. When you start, you get leveled. Students on level two see completely different words than level one. Now, I have students all over the place. Some are, some have seen 300, some have seen, you know, 70. Students have seen 70, you're getting completely different tests than someone that's seen 300. And just a basic example, I have vocabulary test average, for the most part, 60, 70% in the memorization way. I have students who were getting 30s on vocabulary tests previously, getting 70 and 80% correct. And they're telling me this is the highest score, it's the most retention I've ever had on vocab. So it's been incredibly effective program and been really useful. Google Drive, if you guys are familiar with this, it's just, it's one of, we have Google emails through our school, and Google Drive is a, is a storage option with some word processing availability to it. And the thing I really like about this with my students is what I have them do is I have them create a folder with their name on it, they share it with me. Every time they type something in that folder, I can actually click on their folder, I can see what they're typing in real time. I actually, if they type a sentence, I see it on my computer screen at the same time. And the neat thing about it is there's none of this, I forgot my flash drive, I forgot my whatever. If their computer, if they're on there, it saves every single keystroke in real time. It can die, they could pull their phone out, open up Google Drive, and keep typing their essay. They never have to worry about losing it, it disappearing, anything like that. And most importantly, I can, I can, to me, anyway, I can help a student in real time without having to be present. If a student is sick and they need help, they can send me a message, say, hey, can you read my second paragraph? I can go on there, make notes, send it to them, and they can fix it, come back to school the next day with it fixed. Greatly, greatly useful. And with our school emails, they actually have unlimited storage, so they can actually put as many pictures, files, documents on there as they ever could need to possibly put on there. And real quick, I just wanted to share with you guys a couple of fun assignments that we had done. First off, I've actually had create, I had students create a movie for class with images and music and text explaining their version of the American dream. We were reading The Great Gatsby, so the idea of The Great Gatsby is the American dream. So they had to make a presentation, show me their version of the American dream. It worked out really well, they got, it was real personalized and real unique to them. I had students create an advertising campaign for a product, they had to make a physical product, but then they had to film a commercial for it. And to make them a little more engaged with this, I made it a competition. It was kind of cutthroat, they wanted to beat each other really badly, so the video that won was honestly probably the best video I've ever had made for class, so it was really, really creative. I encourage class discussions through the message boards. I'll post a question of the day or discussion of the day and say, hey, did you see the news last? did you see the news last night? What do you think of this?" You know, or something along those lines, some of the kids don't know what I'm talking about, but then they have to figure out, you know, "Oh, hey, there was a presidential debate last night, what happened?" You know, those kind of things. And the idea is to take them outside of the four walls of the classroom, realize that language arts education is not just in the room. Probably one of my favorite things, and you're probably gonna look at me like I'm a crazy person, I actually had purchased, or have had purchased for me, a guy by the name of Ian Docher took all six Star Wars films, rewrote them as Shakespeare plays. These aren't just half-baked Shakespeare plays, they're 10 syllables per line, and writing couplets at the end. Everything is exactly how a Shakespeare play would write. It's hard to engage kids in Shakespeare sometimes. I have kids literally fighting for parts. They got on the floor and were pretending to be characters from the play without any direction, they were just doing this on their own. It was, it just blew my mind to see this, it was, and, you know, they are so excited about it, they're ready to come to class every day, but the technology aspect of it is, they're breaking up into groups. Their final scene, they're gonna perform a scene for the class, because that's a drama, it needs to be performed. They're gonna film it from the green screen, the auditorium. As a group, they're going to put on backgrounds, special effects, everything to make it look like the movies. So, and that's gonna be their final project for the reading, and they are having a literal blast with it, it's been fun. You can see, that's the picture right here, we have this young man, and he actually has an actual lightsaber in his hand, so very fun. And during research paper time, I decided to go above and beyond the regular research paper, because while that's important, it's one thing to just rewrite facts from sources, it's another thing entirely, my students are doing an argumentative research paper. Through this, they not only have to do the paper, they have to create a visual movie-style presentation presenting their issue to the class, and they have to make a couple of propaganda posters for the issue as well, using their computers. And it takes their, it makes their research very personal, and it makes it very uniquely theirs. And that way, they get to do some technology aspects, but once again, it doesn't replace the technology, it's, they're still doing the paper, just like they would traditionally, it's just a couple more pieces to add to it. And I have to put it bottom, I put a little brown, everything, but thanks for your time, I appreciate it. But I invite you guys, at any point in time, if you guys want, I mean, it's probably gonna kick me for samples, but anytime you guys want to come to my room and see what's going on, you're more than welcome, I welcome you guys at any point in time. We've just been really blessed with the technology that you guys have given us or allowed us to have. I would love to show you guys all at some point in time, this physically how this works, but I know that with the connections and I know you guys are having trouble with your stuff, let alone me trying to connect my stuff to it, so. Do you have any questions, or anything they want to know about, or questions?
Great. What classes do you teach?
I teach all the junior English, English 30. I have one hour of advanced placement literature, which we don't use as much of this in, because it's a little bit harder to do that, because it's primarily literature and then writing about the literature. And then I have a class of Guinea pig freshmen, put it that way. I'm trying everything possible new with them, that, they're the ones doing the Shakespeare-Star Wars. And they wanted to, I gave them an option, so then I teach the freshmen. So I actually have three different groups of students that use this, different types of technology.
Freshmen, all freshman English or just?
I just have 17 freshmen.
Okay.
I have one, my third hour class is freshman English.
And your advanced placement class, are you joining as much as?
I am, I really am, it's.
So we're seniors, correct?
Yes, it allows us to have a lot of really deep discussions. Oftentimes, we'll have discussions that are thematically related to the literature, but sometimes they're world-related too. You know, we've had a lot of discussions about, we were reading a novel, and we had a lot of discussions about political correctness and and things like that that were present in it.
So one class of that?
I asked a brandy piece to come speak with you today and demonstrate. She wrote a grant through the Alva Goldbug Education Foundation to get these osmos, is what they're called, and I think she, we received, how many?
We received seven, and we paid out of, I don't know which fund, about $3 to receive the seventh one, because they gave us a discount for being a school. But we still need like eight more to make, and three teacher have at least one.
All the kindergarten have them in their classrooms, and first grade shares them, and I believe Shannon Boer actually bought, that was what she asked for Christmas, so Shannon Boer has one in her pre-K classroom. And all of our teachers, our kindergarten teachers and first grade teachers all have four iPads that we have purchased throughout the last couple of years with technology money. And our pre-K classes have two in each of their classroom right now, but she was gonna demonstrate how our students are using this new technology.
Okay, the osmo comes with just the base that it sits in, and then the little red piece at the top is a mirror that, I'm sorry, the mirrors, the, what you put in front of it up, so that you can see it, I'll move it so you can see it.
No, I can move it.
It came with three different, I'll call them games. I have numbers, words, which is the letters, and I have the tangrams. And I'm gonna show you the numbers. In kindergarten, we do a lot, it's all hands-on. So, you know, from math, when we're talking about numbers, we're counting teddy bears. And when we do geometry, we have our tangrams, our shapes, and we're putting the shapes out, how many different shapes can you put in? The hexagon, and how many triangles, how many triangles did it take to make out of it? So my kids absolutely love this, they are fighting over it every day to who gets to play. So when it comes to math, we just finished up addition, and we go through five. So the apps that come with it, there's five, four, five different apps. They're free after you've purchased the $100 kit. And what you do is, you can take out, we start with the number tile, or the dots on the tiles, and it wants you to make, there's two, two, four, and five, and it wants you to make the numbers. And so you start out adding, you can use five, if you put too much on there, it won't let you do anything, it wants you to take them away. So the kids see the concept of having the dots and translating it to the numbers. And after they have finished this area of it, it'll take them into addition. And it starts out, it's really simple, because they're just using their counters, and from counters, it goes, it gets higher than what we do, so say it's 10, the answer is 10, and they have to figure out how to make 10. They can use 10 ones, if they want to use 10 ones, or a five and four ones, or however they want to get there. And that's helped them with their math concepts quite a bit. With the words, the words is a little bit more difficult for kindergarten to use, because we're still learning sounds, and we're learning our letters. One of the apps in the Word game will give you just the beginning sounds. So in kindergarten, that's where we start, so second nine weeks, we're learning beginning sounds. And so it'll pop a picture up of a balloon, and it wants the first sound you hear in balloon. On this one, they have it as a, it starts out very simple and it gets harder. And so on this, as it shows you, it wants you to fill in the blanks. So it's a deer, and you put your letters out, and if you can't get the correct letters, it's gonna keep telling you it's wrong. Once you get, I don't know if I can find it here. And it's gonna give you credit for all of them. And this game can be played with two, my kids play all their games with at least two of them. You have to tell them to spread out, because they all want to play. And it goes through it after it gets harder, but they have options to, if they get it incorrect, what else could it be? There was one earlier that was beat, and there was just shoes hanging outside of a car, and it took forever to do that, or a lab. And it had a science lab, and the kids had to figure out that it said lab. And then there is also, I'll show you, hand-eye coordination, different games for that. And one of the ways that I'm using it in the classroom is, and I can take a picture of a worksheet, and I can, it'll come up on here, and I put a white piece of paper down, and my students can write their letters. I have a lot of them that are still working on their penmanship, so I can put their name on it if they're learning to spell their name. And they can correctly write their name that way. And it's just a little bit different, a little bit more fun, they really seem to like it. Any questions? Anybody else want to say anything?
Is there like an age range?
It says seven and up, but again, when, as the teachers were playing with it and we put it on difficult, it's, it's difficult. So, yeah, you can, in like, in the words, you can go in and say, "You guys are studying insects," or, I don't know what you guys study. But when we study bugs, I can go in and I can put in bugs, and it's gonna pop up ladybugs and mosquitoes and things like that. And for upper-level elementary, they're gonna be able to spell those words. My kids just guess, and they just kind of throw the letters out there until they get an idea of what's going on, and then they can figure it out. But with the upper elementary, they could definitely use it to help with their vocabulary.
Like you can choose like CBC, let's say we're doing that.
So we do, we have a CBC app on it, it allows you to put in what you want. You can also take your own pictures, I don't know how to do this, but you could take your own pictures and build your own words. So whatever it is you are studying, you can have your own set of vocabulary words that go with it.
Cool.
What is this called?
It's called osmo.
Osmo?
Mm-hmm, yes.
You could, I mean, if we get the new curriculum, they have pictures of these vocabulary, so you could just screenshot it.
Yes, that's exactly right.
So what's the cost of this?
This set retailed for $99, and that's what I wrote my grant for, was, I think, I believe it was four sets at $99 a piece. And when we went to purchase them, we had found where there was an area for teachers, and they they gave us a discount for them, and at the time, there was also buy one, give one to a teacher, and so we got one of them free for that reason. And so we went in and spent the little extra to get the extra, there was, I don't remember which one it was, but one of them, the numbers didn't come with it, so we spent that little bit extra to get just the numbers for the first graders. So that's how they, you know, they've got their one, and right now, they're alternating rooms every couple of weeks, so you get a change up. But in kindergarten, we have one that stays.
Cool.
Thank you.
Any other trade spots? We went at OTA, the Technology Conference, and saw the osmos things, and well, I went went over there, honestly, I've got some OSU teachers, you know, and so the really reason I went to the OU booth was to see if they had any of the OU little stickers, because I stick them on their license plate, and they're there for a couple of months. But before they recognized, they didn't have any, but they had the osmos, and they had some other things too, but but while we were down there, we went to Clinton, had a, if I can find it. Clinton put on a, a presentation about how they I don't get this over. Basically, about PR for their schools.
It's all right, you guys.
I got it, that's why I'm late.
Tim, go.
Okay, so I had Ms. Eckhart come this evening during an observation, was in a classroom, and she's had her students working in different workstations, they go through their assignment, and then they spread out and begin to work, and there's a lot of things going on in there that are great, that all our teachers are doing. And one of the things that I'm gonna have her show you is a way for her to get some really good feedback as to how she's doing instructionally and questions her kids may have, so.
Over Christmas break, I was trying to figure out a way, I have, I'm very lucky, I get to teach two different math classes every day. I teach, I co-teach with another fifth-grade teacher, so we have two different math groups. And I'm very lucky, because I get to have the special ed director, she gets to come in and co-teach with me. And during one of my groups, I actually have a parrot in there too, so I was trying to figure out ways to utilize all three of us the best that we could possibly do. And we have a lot of kids with a lot of different learning styles, and so we try to move through things so that everybody's understanding, but you know, you still get the kids that are just either off and left field and spaced out for the day for various reasons, or just aren't getting it, and they're just, I don't want to be the one who raises my hand and says, "Even after all this, I still don't get it." So I was looking for some ways to figure out how to find some immediate feedback, and I found this website, which is free, love free. And just kind of started, decided to start tinkering with it and see if it would work for what we were looking for, and it's called Exit Ticket. And I'll show it to you, what I'm able to do is build a quick quiz or a test, you've probably, have you heard of, like, the kids can fill out a little slip of paper called an exit ticket at the end of the, a lesson and say, "What did I learn?" Just to check for comprehension. Well, I can build like three to five-question little quizzes and see what they're learning, and to see if they got the concept that was taught that day. And what it does is, we use our iPads, it has an app, and I'll show you, this is an actual list of kids on a quiz day. And as they're taking the test, it starts popping up whether they got it right or wrong, like immediately. So I have half my class, I have about 16 kids, I have 10 iPads, so I can have 10 kids taking their exit ticket test, and six kids going ahead and starting working on their workbook page, and I can monitor them, and while they're doing this, so I can see immediately who's already got issues. When they're all finished, I can look at this list according to percentage, I can see all the kids that are in green, and I can think, okay, they don't necessarily need to go to group today. They're okay, they're ready to be independent, they can go on. So just checking with them periodically, and they're ready to go. The ones in yellow might need a little bit more help, because they got a lower percentage. The ones in red, those are the kids that are on my watch list that really need some extra help, they didn't get the lesson. So I can immediately see who that is and go, "Okay, you need to come with me, and we need to go work on this again, because you're not getting it." Or I can, the other cool thing is, I can click on the question, you may not be able to see, it's kind of small. But you can click on the question, and I can see how many kids got the right one, or how many kids were close. Or, I don't care if I use your son, he's on my list. Yeah. He might care, but. He told me he didn't care this morning. I can pull up, I can pull up Weston's and see exactly what Weston answered, and what Weston got right, and what Weston got wrong. And I like to use the, just the free answer instead of multiple choice, because there's no way they can guess. They have to get the right answer, they have to know what they're doing. So Weston did awesome on this one, he got 100 percent on circumference, so, David Weston. But I can immediately see who and what percentage of kids are getting the questions right, so I can see, well, number two didn't have a high percentage, maybe I need to reteach that to the whole class as well. So it has varied uses, varied uses. I can go into a graded rubric where I can see all of their test scores altogether, based on our Oklahoma pass skills. So I can see which kids need help based on standard as well. So I can pass it on to our title teacher who works with my math kids, saying, "This child needs more help on this specific standard, not just this one skill, this whole standard." So it's been very beneficial for what we've been doing in my room, so. Any questions?
I came down here today for 30 minutes to make sure this was gonna work on here, and it doesn't. It did. It doesn't now. What we did, like I said, we went to the OTA and went to a presentation from Clinton. Clinton, what they talked about was, you know, somebody's gonna tell your story, it might as well be you. And so they do some newscasts for their elementary schools and things like that. So we went and purchased a green screen, and for next to nothing, and then some basically editing software. And so now we do our own newscast, we've got five of them, they're on our webpage. And here's our newest one.
They like doing it, don't they?
They do, the kids enjoy it. They'll talk about what they've learned that week, and so that kind of reinforces it with them. My other kids, and we've shown two of them to my other kids, and they really enjoy it. They think it's pretty big time for a second, third grader. Can you see it?
So as a parent, you can go on your website and download this to listen to it?
Yeah, you can go on the website and and just watch our, we've got five newscasts on there so far. Uh, this is our latest one.
How do you pick who gets the most?
I go to each teacher and have them nominate it. Yeah, I'm not.
Hi, my name is Toby. I'm, I'm in third grade from Miss Beeler's class. This week, we're working on fractions. We're reading a story called Fly Eagle Fly. And now, important things going on s- on in second grade with Johnny. Over to you.
Hi, my name is Johnny. I am in the second grade from Mrs. Hackenberg's class. This week in math, we are learning the fraction in reading, we are reading. I like where I am. We are also learning how to write poetry, now for sports with Jent and Dylan.
Thanks, guys. Tuesday, the nineteenth. We had Longfellow Elementary Night at the high school game against New Cook. We sang the national anthem under the duvet of our music teacher, Miss Me.
We performed basketball drills that we learned from Mr. Chapman at halftime of the games. The second grade performed at halftime of the girls' game. And the third grade performed at halftime of the boys' game.
We did individual, individual ball handling drills, zigzag dribbling drills, two ball dribbling drills, and strong passing drill.
We would like to thank Miss Fink for teaching us the national anthem and for Mr. Chapman giving us a head start on becoming great go- book and ladybug basketball players.
Now for Toby's interview with our secretary, Mrs. Graves.
Then our third grade student gets to choose somebody in our faculty or staff that they want to interview and and come up with questions and then they ask the questions.
Good. I have some questions. What do you like most about working at Longfellow?
I enjoy seeing the kids' faces every morning and trying to make them smile as they come in the door and hoping that they had a great day and just watching the kids grow.
Thank you. I have kind of a silly one. How many Band-Aids do you hand out?
Well, that varies from day to day, probably about as many peppermints as I give out as well. I would say probably about twenty.
Thanks. What's your favorite color from the final question?
Clear because it goes with everything.
Thank you. Now for the joke of the game.
Where does the king keep his armies?
I don't know, Dylan. Where does the king keep his armies? In his sleeveys. Ha, 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 ha.
We hope you enjoy our Longfellow broadcast. That is, that is Toby. I am Johnny, stay great, Alba.
Stay great, Alba.
You guys have any questions on that? Okay, it's, it's been a, a great thing for us and and we're trying to implement more technology at our building. And uh, and the kids are really buying into it, they're enjoying it. It sends out a more positive message, message from our school. And that's something I failed at for a long time is that I don't, I don't like bragging on myself and I don't like bragging on my school. I, and so it's very difficult for me. Uh, but once we started doing it, the kids really enjoy it, they buy in and it's been a lot of fun.
Do you have anything for Ron?
No, I didn't have anything.
He sent me a text, I have something. This won't be this evening, you can mention that we are currently working with the reading and language departments on this break. Making sure we are aligned and coordinating it with our laptop initiative. And that's, I mean, that's, they're kind of just putting those standards on the, on the computer making sure teachers are using those and everything is allowing to do that. So um he's a basketball, he's, he's governing that all of us. So they are doing some technology things at the new school.
Okay. Well, first of all, your good, your baggies have filled with all these good things again from the HTO group at the high school. I wanted to thank you for your work here in the Iowa Public Schools. January is the Board of Education Recognition Month. And because we had such an early board meeting and February first, we haven't done anything. But we also as administrators want to thank you for your work as board members. And we want to recognize you for the great work that you do for us, for the kids and Alva. And we appreciate it very much. Uh, first of all, before I get started with some things, I'd like to introduce our district teacher of the year, Kara Brown. And our district rising star, teacher of the year, Kathy Ank. Would you like to tell them the process that you had to go through to, to get here, Kara?
Sure, I would love to.
Sure.
Um, well, the process really wasn't that big, we just held a regular, um, you know, you vote for your favorite, your teacher who you think is doing the best job within the building. And then I did not know this, but then you have to fill out some paperwork. And it was four basic questions, or so, it seemed basic, but to me, they were a lot more involved. And so um they were like, yeah, can you turn this in in two weeks? I was like, yes, I can. Um, and so uh the four questions, like one of them was, what would you improve? Uh, or how, what ways would you recommend to improve classroom instruction? And to me, that's like a really difficult question to answer because it really varies on content area and grade level taught, um your personal teaching style, and there's so many ways in which I think you can improve that. And so you kind of had to answer those questions to the best of your ability. Um, and then they used a rubric, I believe, to kind of like grade each um response and then come up with who they felt would be a good person. And I was shocked that they chose me, so that was very nice of them.
How was your experiment, Kathy?
Very similar, we had, I believe, the same questions. But you just, I mean, you wanna be unique and you don't wanna, you know, sound like a broken record and you wanna let your personality show. So I know you're not in a classroom with us every day, but yeah.
Well, comments from the selection committee said it was a very difficult situation this year because had such good outstanding teachers apply to this. So congratulations to you both and we appreciate you very much for working for the Iowa Public Schools and what you do. And if y'all don't wanna stay, you can, if you wanna leave, you can leave. Okay, go cook dinner, but you gotta get a picture first.
You should have been cooking her dinner.
Okay, don't have any resignations or any separations at this point in time. Um, strategic planning, I thought I would just give you back some information. Actually, Tim had this saved off of his computer from our meeting. And these are the items that we talked about, strategic planning. And these are the items that we have been, have completed at this point in time. And we're still working on some of these items. And Larry, you had a question? Did you wanna talk to that long fellow?
I forgot what it is.
You did, huh?
Let's see. I don't know, I'll, I'll ask you later.
Okay. But that's just in, some information for you on what we're doing. And uh, I can bring out my notes, go ahead.
Let me ask you, um, when is the new uh facility gonna be finished at the high school?
Well, I'm gonna visit with you about that, I'm not real sure on that. Um, apparently, they're gonna try to get all the steel up within the next two weeks cause they kind of told Les that the steel would be off of our parking lot in two weeks. And then I don't know how long, so I can't anticipate maybe after spring break or before spring break, we might. Whether we get that back into our possession at that time, don't know. So uh hopefully we'll have that, you know, by the end of the year for sure on that list.
Now, I noticed that uh since I'm an old track coach, that they, they uh put uh part of that dirt off of that hill about that far from the start-finish line of the hundred yard dash. How come? Or what, what's all that for?
That's for actually rain and for gutter because they're gonna hook that in somehow into our existing system. And our system goes out to the north and drains in the park for any rain runner. That's what their first, I think, I think they changed to a certain degree cause I talked to Greg last, just last week, and they wanna run it back out toward our parking lot down Apache. All the rainwater.
Are they, are they gonna put that, all that dirt back up there?
Gonna have to do something. And that's what we're talking about.
Because that first time we get a big rain, all that stuff will be all over that track.
Yep.
Okay.
We're working on that. Okay? Okay, communications. We're looking at pre-K for next year to be offered full, full that. And we've had a survey out since about the second week in January on our website. And so far, we've had about, uh, I believe thirty-four parents saying that they want pre-K all day long and then four parents saying half a day. Right now, we have eighty-two, I believe, in pre-K, or is it eighty-four?
We have uh seven six maybe?
Okay, seventy-six. So we, so we kind of anticipate that if that happens, that we will probably have around eighty pre-K students. We hope to come to you in the April board meeting to make our recommendations on that. And what we're looking at is the number of students that might participate in pre-K. The number of teachers that we would have to add to the staff to be able to do that. Because not only in the classroom, but it's gonna affect our PE, it's going to affect our counseling and possibly some of our special ed needs also. So as a staff, we're looking at that too, these when we come in and meet with it. Also facilities, you know, uh, the only room that we're gonna have next year available would be at Lincoln. That would cause a split of some classes. And we're looking at if that split is worth sending kids up or leasing or buying portable buildings would be the best. So I've contacted a portable building manufacturer, they're supposed to be getting me some specs and some ideas of the cost and those types of things. So those are the things that we're gonna be working on.
One portable building or two?
Well, looks like we may have to have at the maximum three portable buildings. But, and, and just with our initial visit with Allison, she's not so worried about maybe having classrooms out there and maybe the activity classes meeting in those portable rooms, like the music. Right now, we're having music on stage and we wanna get that out of that stage cafeteria and back into the original room that we built for that and so forth. So we're looking at all that to see what we can do and what we can't do.
Are these, are this parents who just want half-day, are they iffy on it? Or are they adamant that they only want half-day or will it?
I don't think the question asked that part of it, Linda, I'm not sure. We basically just said, do you want pre-K all day or pre-K half a day? And so far, we've had thirty-eight responses to it. And you know, Les and I talked about it on the radio Monday and hopefully we'll get some more because with all this technology that you saw tonight and so forth, the only way that you could do it is get onto a computer. The iPhone doesn't react to the survey for some reason, right? We don't, we can't figure that out. Okay? Um, on the twenty-first of January, we have a national speaker come into Alva and that was a joint effort with Northwestern, Burlington and Alva Schools, Dr. John Draper. He was CEO of the Educational Research Services in Washington DC. We had a really good turnout of teachers and beginning teachers and students. And his message was basically an uplifting message about education in the United States is doing very well. But we're being uh compared to a lot of European and Japanese and we're not being compared apples with apples. But he talked the same thing that Chris Eckhart talked about it is that integrated teaching in the classroom and that's what we're gonna have to look at. And one of the things that uh in the future, you know, what's a traditional student anymore? Is there a traditional student that needs to graduate from high school in four years, five years, six years? Whatever it takes, that's what we need to be start looking at and so forth. So very good. We hope to do more of these joint adventures in the future with Northwestern and some other schools and bring some renowned speakers into our area to help with our professional development. I thought it was very successful myself.
If, if you go to doctor, or go to johndraper.org, basically the same presentation that he gave that night. He's got a full-length video on, on his website that you can watch that same presentation.
Wasn't he at the school board convention?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we heard him.
He was very good.
You heard him.
Yeah, he's very good. He, he's encouraging.
Yes.
So many times we kept our tone how bad a job he did. And I knew this.
He kind of dispelled, dispelled a lot of those myths.
Yes, I appreciated that, I was, I enjoyed him really a lot, he's good, very good.
And as you heard, we are in the process of textbook adoption. And here are some of the criteria that we're looking at, so I just wanted you to be aware of it. And this is going to go in line with the textbooks in the future. So each year, we will try to set our goals and set um some research in where we wanna be in our textbook adoption to go along with the language arts. And Tim, Tim's kind of spearheading this with also with Sherry Lovelace. And these are some of the ideas that we'll be looking at to make those adopted. Textbook adoption, a little bit more educated rather than just what's out there, to be real honest with you. You know, how is it gonna affect us in six years? How is it gonna affect our students? Is it gonna be aligned all the way through to twelfth grade? Can we even do that? What the teachers are gonna do, cause they're gonna be able to use a rubric. And it's gonna be one rubric and we're gonna be able to look at that rubric throughout and see what teachers want. How much play is technology gonna play with our textbooks? Are we gonna be able to download our textbooks on our iPads, on those other things for our students, so?
How often do we?
Every six years. So what's next, your science?
No, we just did science.
Math. I think math. So these things will correspond with what we're gonna do with setting goals and curriculum alignment and those types of things. Our enrollment as of today is a thousand four. Uh, enrollment with our accreditation report in October uh was uh thousand sixteen. So we're twelve students down from the October accreditation office. We also, Steve Sheever took thirty-six desks to Dover Public Schools after the fire. The ones that we had circ- we had surplus. That's all they wanted, and we offered some other things, but that's all they wanted. They're very appreciative about that. Okay. Other things that we have been looking at are large item expenditures that we may be involved with this summer and to extend on. These are estimates on these prices. Last week, I met with a laptop paving, and my talk was Randy McMurphy for about 45 minutes today. But we would like to pave south of the existing South parking lot, or excuse me, east of the existing South parking lot, the auditorium. And if you'll remember, there's a divider near a rain gutter right in the middle, all the way to the north of the auditorium. Those two places possibly going to cost us $100,000 to black top it. So I talked to Randy McMurphy, who do I need to call? How do we set up these specs? And the company out here that we buy are signed C E R T. Is that the name of it? C E R G? Anyway, it's a government entity out here. And because we are a school and because it was set up to help county commissioners, they'll help me set up the bid specs and those types of things. We'll have to bid that out and get that. But I think that's an important thing that we try to do and get it completed. And we do have the money in the building fund to be able to do that. So that's one of the large items that we want to do right away, is try to get that done by graduation. You know, as many activities as we have, and with our old Bluebird activity buses, we may look for a new bus, and the new bus is going to be somewhere around $350,000. Our telephone system in the Alva Public Schools is antiquated, outdated, and so forth, and they tell me that in four years, we're not even be able to use it. So we're gathering information on how many telephones we have, and we're going to get bids out, and we're talking with Bank Central, just time to help us with that. And again, that number four depends on our pre-K, additional teachers. Four teachers at about 15 years of experience, excuse me, would cost about $158,000. Looking at where we want to be in the future, we're looking at the possibility of maybe an additional staff of a master teacher, curriculum specialist, that could help us in all of these areas to get this mapping and curriculum alignment together. A teacher would cost, on the average, about $42,000. If we have to get three portable buildings for Washington, I've estimated 150. I'm not even sure because at one time, I was told that we could get portable buildings for $50,000 apiece. But that company has not gotten back with me. Also, we've got some concrete work we'd like to do at the bus shed. We extended our driveways from our vague doors, but in between where the people park is dirt, and when it rains, it's mud, and mud's carried everywhere. So we're looking at that, and 16,000 maybe there. Our softball lights, we've got to find somebody since all the oil plate is gone and all the electric, and somebody come in and put those in. We do have our poles, we do have our lights, but we're going to have to do that. And then our, we're either going to have to put four new poles down on the football field to get the end zones a little lighter than what it is now, or we might be able to do it with just four poles and do LED lights and those types of things. So I'll be looking into that. And then I know that Stephanie Martini feels like that with the added science requirements, and we have two full-time science teachers at the middle school, that there's a need for a third science teacher at the middle school. So we'll look into that possibly.
Does that reduce our class size, or is that what the?
Well, we've got 22, 23, 24 science classrooms because we've gone down to two teachers.
I know, but adding a third teacher, would that reduce?
Yes, they'd go down to about 16. Okay? And then Tim and I attended an Oklahoma School Board Association meeting last Friday in the city, and it had to do with start-to-finish building needs and so forth. And a lot of good ideas. The number one thing that we felt like was pretty important was some type of projected child care that we could get. And we feel like maybe the health department might be able to do that. But if we intend to do any kind of building in the future, I think that's some information that our patrons need to know was where we're at in projected numbers of people coming to Alva and what our school population would be. But learned a few good things down there, it was a really good meeting, and felt like it was worth our while to be there. So. Any questions?
Do you have like the total dollar amount of what this whole is?
No, I have not. Because everything's such a projection at this point in time, there's these guesses on my part.
Yeah.
You know? And that's kind of our want list, to be real honest with you. And we'll be discussing more and more about what our needs are. I think tomorrow in our administrative meeting, I told them last week that we need to talk about teachers, staffing, see what we need and so forth, to see if we've got anybody retiring, if we've got anybody we think are leaving or anything, so we can get a job on that for next year. Any other questions?
Item 7. Items occurring in business, 7A, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve, revised multiple year 2016 assignments as listed on 781.
Well, we had, you know, Pam as a new employee, and we need to name her as co-payroll clerk for some of our paperwork and some of the software. So I'd recommend to the board that we do this.
I make a, I make a motion we hire Pam Gale as co-payroll clerk. She and Joanne Isenberg.
Second.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Martin.
Yes.
Aye.
7B, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the school calendar for 2016 to 2017.
We presented three calendars to the teachers. The one calendar that we presented would have started school on August the 17th. Teachers did not want that because they want as many days as they can to teach before the state test. So they wanted to go the week before. The only difference between the second calendar that we're presenting is that there was no February 13th vacation day. The last day of school would have been on Wednesday, professional development would have been on Thursday. With this calendar, and most of our people wanted this, it did give them that one day in February, we ended school on a Thursday, professional development on a Friday. And that's what the majority of the teachers wanted, and, and the other thing that is a big change as far as I'm concerned is they all wanted that two weeks off at Christmas. I don't know that anybody liked our Christmas vacation days, or they all thought we should have been off all two weeks. Yeah. So anyway.
Do you have a snow days? How is that figured in? Can you use an Easter day or like any of the other days?
That is 175-day calendar, Linda, okay? And we'll have to vote again next fall to go that 1,080. So that 1,080 is built in there for a snow day. But if we had to, we could use that Good Friday or that Good Monday off that we have in the calendar to use that. You know, the first year of student tenure, we were at eight days. We did not have to make it up because we go over the extended day, plus we're trying to go through 175 days. This calendar may not be any good, to be real honest with you, because there's lots of talk in the legislature about adding five days and so forth with teacher pay raise and so forth. But this is a traditional 175-day calendar, five days professional development in there, and then we will ask the board again in August, I think, when we have to do that, to go with that 1,080 hours. Teachers have had input, administrators have had input, so I'd recommend this calendar to the board to be approved.
Would you propose having graduation then on the 19th?
Yes, that Friday night. Isn't that right?
Yes, yes.
The other reason this kind of helps us too from a little bit of history is, I don't know, five years ago, we felt like that having graduation on Memorial Weekend would be a double thing that might help us get people in and do that. We had a lot of people complain about it. They didn't want to give up their Memorial Weekend, come home to a graduation, to be real honest with you.
But it's different, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
So this helps us in testing, helps on the Memorial Weekend, and we still get that graduation on Friday night.
I make a motion we approve the school calendar for 1617, 2016 and 2017.
Subject to revision.
Yeah. True.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye.
7C, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the memorandum of agreement with, with SURF or Success AmeriCorps program year 2016-2017.
This is the actual cost to our school for the AmeriCorps. I don't know, how long have we been with AmeriCorps? Several years?
Ever since I've been here, right? And we've been with AmeriCorps every year.
And that's the amount of money that, that we have to pay for six different people coming in here to help us and so forth. They act as tutors, they act as teachers' aides, they can do almost anything for us. And I would make the motion that we continue our contract with the AmeriCorps SURF or Success program.
Is that enough? Do you need more?
No.
We're only allotted so many.
That's our allotment.
We're, we're there.
We're there, we're at the top part.
It's pretty economical.
Yes, ma'am. Well, and the other good thing too, you know, even if grandparents wanted to, some of this money that they could earn doing that could go to their grandchild's education tuition in college. So it's a real cheap program, and they do a great job for us, and we appreciate it very much. So I would recommend to the board that we continue our contract with AmeriCorps Success AmeriCorps program.
We accept 7C.
Second.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye.
7D, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the requests from Bible Baptist Church Alva to lease a bus from June 6th until 2016 to travel to Black Mesa State Park at Kenton, Oklahoma for church camp. Bible Baptist will provide certificate of insurance.
They have been leasing one for us for what, three years now? They have met all of the obligations and so forth to take care of our bus. So I would recommend to the board that we contract with Bible Baptist for an activity bus for their trip.
So move.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye.
7D, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the Alva Public School Number One revised board policies as listed 71 through 7010.
Again, you all have had these for a month, and these are the recommendations back from the Oklahoma School Board Association. We do pay an annual fee to review these policies, and these are the recommendations. And the next set, I will try to get you the corrections and read. Okay, I did not do it this time, and so that's my fault, but I will do that. But these are our policies that we have. They meet the new language, or if laws change due to legislative, it meets those needs. They come from the school board. So I would recommend to the board that we accept these new policies as presented.
I saw move.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Aye.
Martin? Yes.
Ellis?
Aye.
When does our Health and Fit School, that advisory committee meet? Have?
They usually meet in the beginning of the year and maybe part of the second semester.
Quarter.
Quarter. Okay, excuse me.
Do they make, do they just follow this, or do they make recommendations or?
They follow that, and then they can make recommendations to them. And a lot of time, we get those recommendations at the end of the year when the teachers give us their concerns also, so we don't listen to a concern as part of the negotiated item so that we can handle those during the summer or whatever. So we, as principals, look at them and get all that information in the late spring.
Item A, new business, there's one item.
I would like to have a vote to approve or not to approve a contract with Kellogg Consulting LLC to complete our email application. Email has to do with all of our telephones, our internet, and Tony has done it in the past. But the E-Rate application has changed. I know that we paid $18,000 last summer to AT&amp;T because of somebody not getting the E-Rate completed correctly four years ago.
How much did we pay?
About $18,000. I don't know if it was anybody's fault or anything, and we're also being done by AT&amp;T for another $14,000 because of E-Rate. And I think it's getting so complicated that we need to go outside and resource this. And this company is the number one rated company to file E-Rates in the state of Oklahoma. In the long run, I think it would save us money because they're... they're are going to be able to assist us with billing, disbursements, problem resolution, compliance, audits, and reviews. And I think it's just like that extra insurance policy that we dealt with with American Credibility because of the Obamacare and everything. These are the experts on this E-rate. And I'm not sure that Mark's got time to do that and learn this year, but maybe later on, we won't have to. This is just a contract per year. But I think it would save our school a lot of money if we do that. The cost for the year is three thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. And we can afford it. And I think that will keep us out of trouble with the government and so forth.
Do they have any guarantees? I mean, like if they, if we do get another fine, are they?
I don't think there's any guarantee in that, but I think they will go through the board for us. And Jane, there's a new interpretation from commissioners that we don't have to pay that. And I think they were pretty influential in getting that interpreted that way by the state commissioner.
They do this for other school districts?
Yes. Like I said, they're the number-one rating in the state of Oklahoma for these E-rays.
Where did you see that?
That second page of all the testimonies.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I think that's what.
That's part of it, yes.
Oklahoma City Public Schools.
It's a major undertaking.
Well, the notebooks are
When you approve this, when do you want to, I mean, when are you gonna start?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm the caller.
Okay.
Mark has a four-seventy-one. You know, he made that E-rate? Form completed, and that was the first step. So the next process is doing all of this other. Toni Pickle works for Pioneer Telephone. She's an E-rate expert. And talking with Toni, and she puts on the E-rate seminars for schools and so forth. Her recommendation was, it's gonna be awesome. And we worked with Toni Pickle way back when we got the audiovisual program down in the basement of the high school auditorium, and we used to present classes online. Twenty-five years ago, probably. So I think it's well worth the money, and I would make most, or not a motion, but a recommendation to the board that we to accept this contract and get involved with this company.
Please follow Mr. Parker's recommendation to make a motion that we approve the contract as he referenced.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. I'm a man signing of documents approved by everybody.